Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 2nd meeting of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners. My name is Will Gibson, and I have the honor of being chair of this group for the next several months. At this time, I'd like to call all Commissioner offers to deliver our dedication. Let us pray. Here's God our heaven and the Father, we thank you now for the gift of this day and hour. Giving us the grace and mercy to symbolize ourselves tonight, we have to bless those who are in the audience. We thank you for their participation, we ask that you bless this board. Give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and insight to do the best possible thing for this county. And we ask that you, we want the grace to continue to lead in the way that we should, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. If you can and will, if you stand with me and thank the Lord. Pleasure to meet you today.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, you have seen before you and have had access previously to the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Guys, here. As is our tradition, we will start with the public forum. There are several people who have signed up to speak. I believe the first one that we have is Dr. Melville McCall.
Mr. Chairman, why she's coming, is Mr. McCall on, just so we know.
Carol, are you, Carol McCall, are you online? Carol McCall. I spoke with Carol, that was a good, thank you, Tim, for reminding me. I talked with Carol about five o'clock, and I was under the impression, she said she could not attend in person for those meetings. Anyway, I heard she's been having some health issues the last several months. And I was under the impression that she was going to be online, so maybe she will.
She is online.
Carol, can you hear me? Also, our county attorney, who is normally with us, called me about three o'clock today. He has not worked the last couple of days, and asked if we could carry on without him. I told him we were not as good without him as we were the way that I was about that. We don't want anybody who's not feeling well coming to be in our question. For those of you who are going to speak, your time limit will be three minutes. And we will, we've got several people who used to speak, so we will hold fairly fast to that. McCall, are you ready to begin?
I am, I'm trying to get back up to where I need to stop. Good evening.
Good evening.
Gibson and the county commissioners, I'm Melville McCall, with partners in ministry in East Larnburg. Joining me are some of our board members and advisory board members and some parents out here as well as some of our partners. And we are here because we're committed, we're committed to provide a safe environment and diverse learning opportunity to strengthen our children, our youth, and families, to increase fair and just opportunities for everyone to receive a hand up, to live the healthiest life possible, to assume greater responsibility for the future. We support over sixty-five full-time and part-time dedicated staff members and over one hundred and fourteen thousand volunteer teachers. We stand learning opportunities to help close the academic achievement gap, providing youth to work with them, that twenty-first century workforce, giving them an opportunity to do hands-on work, opportunities to engage in science, technology, engineering, and math. We prepare them for the, to graduate on time if we're ready, as well as to be college graduates in our county. We have a real housing program that houses appropriate dress housing conditions and prepare families with urgent repair so that they will not be displaced from their homes. We have work teams coming in to actually work with us, do loads of repairs. We have a resource and referral center, and that's to interconnect and integrate all of our programs and services. We have quite a bit of programs and services out partners and ministry. This is the campus here, eleven acres of land, debt-free. This is the division that we have for our community education center. The capital campaign of three point five million dollars donors and pledges right there at two point one million dollars. We're requesting commitment of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next eighteen to twenty-four months. One of the things that our funders are asking is that we have invested interest in the county and wanting to see the county input as many of the dollars that have come in, where can we operate a two-million-dollar budget for programming? That's what we operate right now, but those funds are coming in outside of the county. And so, we have, the ask is that we look at the county supporting this project as well because it will be used by the county. So, we look at it and ask the questions about that. You, at this point, if you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have, any of the board members have questions, Dr. McCall?
I have a, a new school question. Kids who are in high school, being the two prep or help graduate or go to college. How many of those is coming approximately per year?
We're doing right at about thirty-five to forty, between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four years old. They prepare our other school staff to come through us, they're prepared for the workforce. They can either do OJT, work experience, or internship, and those will pay. We actually pay that cost for them to come through that program to get those experiences. And they move out, and we have one here, a follow-up service with them. Once they finish us, us, they'll actually do the follow-up service.
So, you see that number is about thirty-five?
That's right, forty a year.
Your after-school program for young kids, how many do you serve annually?
Currently, we're serving about four hundred and fifty students that are coming through us, four hundred and fifty students. We have the three hundred that are third and eighth grades, and then we have the one hundred and fifty that are eighteen to twenty-four years old.
You're saying you serve about three hundred and fifty annually?
Annually.
Scotland County?
Scotland County, those are just Scotland County kids that come to us. We actually pick them up from the public schools, all schools in the county, we actually go actually pick them up and actually bring them to the center. Our parents will be there and probably people help them out. But our enrollment has increased and is continuing to increase.
And how many years have you been serving? Approximately, how many years have you been serving that many kids in Scotland County?
Fourteen years, we've been serving fourteen.
Fourteen years.
And have generated a lot, now we have two million dollars that we operate a program at.
If my math is correct, that's somewhere around five to six billion.
A year, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, Dr. McCall, I have always, every time I go to your place of work, I feel so impressed. And I served on the board for a little while, and I'm so proud of your work and your dedication, of trying to get funds for the community center. I know you were very hard, and I was coming for that back two or three years ago. And you were just beginning, and you have made a lot of progress. So, really proud of your effort and the way you serve Scotland County.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
We do have a project date of groundbreaking, and that we're looking at October for that groundbreaking date. So, we really do want the support, the need to support, to reach our seventy percent of our ability to provide.
Thank you. If you're a board member for this agency, would you just raise your hand? We appreciate all of what you do, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to make just one comment.
Go ahead.
I understand that the project that not just serve the kids, but the project, you know, building this, I don't know if it's a gym nation or sometimes facility.
It's like a community education center.
Community education center?
Yes, sir.
And I understand that that's not something that is only, just on the drawing board. They already have the contract lined up to start that project, so it's in the works. And I just think that's fabulous because that facility was just there prior to, up until the minute it come in. And not only did they keep that facility going, we didn't have to worry about tearing it down or whatever. Now, they are adding, this project is going to cost approximately?
Three point five million dollars.
Three point five million dollars.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Next, Willie Hall is actually here. I'm sorry.
That's all right, no problem. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand up and show my pride for Alice Johnson. Well, usually it was Alice Johnson vision that kept a lot of us off the street. And I had prepared a bunch of numbers and for our all of these participants. But then, I thought about it, the bottom line is, I went to larnburg.org, and there, there was a question that was asked. And it said, "What do you see meaning in Larnburg?" And some of the things that I highlighted were some of the things that was put into the mission statement. And that is, the creation of small and innovative centers. A community whose history of cooperation provides confidence in the future's success. A community who fabric and history of working together is not born out of necessity, but is born out of culture, character, and a sense of community. That sense of community, I like to hang my head on there because it is that community, Lincoln Heights community, and growing up in, that helped a lot of students to achieve through Alice Johnson. Starting back in nineteen sixty-seven, I give an example. My sister graduated, Lucille Hill, graduated from Johnson High School, then went straight to Wall Street and worked. She didn't go to a community college. So, then, the education system that they provided was such a great form that when we would go off to school, we could meet our guidelines and our expectations. Tonight, I also just got a text from Miss Jasmine Carey, who resides at 506 Roseville Street here in Larnburg. She's currently studying her pharmaceutical degree at University of Chapel Hill. She was just made the vice president for the National Pharmacy School up there. And I'm saying that, all of that to say, it boils down to this. If you're willing to invest into Alice Johnson, the return is so great. Over the past twenty years, when I come home, I heartfully believe because I see a lack in that area and that community. I think that it's all well and good that we can spend money to build other facilities out in the county, but when we talk about the urban area, we want to quote all the statistics that show the negativity, such as an example, the only place you have a basketball go over there is J.C. Park. And then, when we look at the policing precinct, that we don't have cops that actually walk to be, stroll to be, get involved. The only way that I think that we can show that we really care is to invest wholeheartedly. By making Alice Johnson.
You got to have that again, you have your time to take about another thirty or forty-five seconds.
Okay, to summarize it, it's back in to you guys, but. In closing, again, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to stand here and show my pride for Alice Johnson and the Lincoln Heights community.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. McCall? Thank you again, sir. Next is Annette Reed.
Good evening, my name is Annette Reed, a lone, lifelong resident of Scotland County, a former student at Alice Johnson School, and a retired school councilor. My reason for addressing the commissioners tonight is to ask for your support and remembering the rich history of Scotland County. While looking on Facebook, while looking on the Facebook site called Historical Larnburg in Scotland County, opposed to ask the question, is there a group, or does this group have any relation to Larnburg, Scotland County information? The administrator paid victim a Google response, there is very little, but we certainly need more. He went on to say that he tried to research information on Professor Isaac Ellis Johnson, but didn't know anyone did that knew him. I knew him. Mr. Isaac Ellis Johnson was born June sixth, eighteen ninety, and was a native of Snow Hill, Alabama. He received his formal education at Snow Hill Normal and Industrial Institute, Hampton Institute, Harvard University, and at the University of Pennsylvania. He came to Larnburg in September nineteen twelve. Mr. Johnson was the first principal Lincoln Heights school, which was built in Larnburg in the early fifties for African-American students in grade one through twelve. In nineteen fifty-nine, the school was named in his honor for his dedication and commitment to education. When he retired in June nineteen sixty-four, after fifty-two years of service, Mr. Johnson was honored by the Larnburg School Board in an impressive program of honors given to him by the state superintendent, the state treasurer, Hattie M. Jones, school board chairman, and A.D. Gibson, school superintendent. I.E. Johnson School was birthed out of a dark history of segregation, but its foundation is rooted in the resilience and success of the harvest that it yielded. Prior to integration, the school was a place where a sense of purpose and self-worth was instilled. It was a place where teachers and administrators, even with the use of used textbooks and materials, they used it as an excuse not to excel. Everything good that took place in the black community revolved around the school. It was a center of many community activities. To ensure Scotland County would have a permanent reminder of the legacy of Alice Johnson and the school that was named in his honor, I asked the board of commissioners to support using the former I.E. Johnson School building as a community resource center. As a community resource center, it can be used to be the hub of activity for tutoring, recreation, providing and employing ability skills, event spaces, a senior center, and other usages that will benefit the citizens of Scotland County. Thanks for your consideration.
Mr. Robinson, do you have anyone else signed up to speak?
I do not.
At the risk of starting a stampede, is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Somebody up here. Okay, are you coming to voice support for Alice Johnson? I know that we have a lot of people in this room who are here to do that. We will let these two gentlemen speak, and then we will have a show of hands for how many of you, I'll do that now. How many of you are here for the purpose of showing support for Alice Johnson's life?
Okay, thank you all very much. My name is Charles Chan, and I'm a graduate from Alice Johnson, nineteen sixty-four. My question is, I'd like somebody to explain to me why we can't have that community, I mean, Alice Johnson's community at this. I understand that Gibson, not Gibson, Laura Hill is getting ready to build a community building. And we're going to have one of us. So, if somebody explained to me, out of, in Larnburg, you don't have anything but kids. So, somebody, make someone on the board explain to me how that could.
I would like to, yeah, that's that.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chan. What we attempted to do first was to build a fourteen point five million dollar complex in Larnburg. We put it on the ballot because we wanted to pay for it through sales tax. And this complex would include a real lot, women who, community too, huge. Very modern and huge water slide and all of those amenities. But we didn't get the community support, and the referendum failed. So, the first thing on our agenda was to take care of Larnburg. And we got approval from RADA to put it on the ballot, and we would like to do that again. That's what we would like to do, is build a complex that will take care of Scotland County, thirty-five thousand people. That's what we truly need. To say this, before you finish, this is not going against your time. I want everyone here to know that I support whatever we can do with Alice Johnson's school. It will just take some time to put it together and see if it will work. There's a little stuff that has to be done. For example, I'm for businesses starting up there, having the breathing place for small businesses. There's some issues that we would have to solve first. And what I would be, once we do it, and someone, for example, started, I know a person who was interested in starting a beauty college there, qualified. But then, once you're using taxpayers' money to get the students, you may have to get them from surrounding counties. So, we have to find, get the answers to those questions, and it's to take us a little time to put it together and see if we can make that work. It's a great idea, I want to, I want to see that happen. But there could be some legal issues if folk from Maxton and other counties want to come in and make up the students there because that would have to happen, probably. And can we do that? I'm for that. I'm not against anything, but it's going to take a little time for us to put everything together. Thank you.
Well, you know, you're talking about Alice Johnson, we could have put a police station in that area. We have had a lot of trouble in that area. But my question was, you still haven't explained to me how did Laura Hill get that, got there?
How Laura Hill got it?
Yeah.
The storm came and tore down what they had, and we went up there with a board and toured the place, and it was too costly to repair what was left, and they had nothing. So, that's how we ended up having to do something there.
So, they got your support, or they got the board's support?
Yes, yeah, we supported.
Can I say one thing?
I'll tell you what, me, and I'm sure everybody here, maybe Mr. DJ gets to do it on one of them. But this is what happened in Laura Hill.
The people come out?
People showed up. And said, and said, "This is what we, and what we want, what we demand." And to me, that played a big role, because that's, that's the ones got to pay for it.
So, that's what we're going to record? I appreciate the time, but I owe you all the business, that's why I got ready to take it back. There's a lot, there's a lot of people coming out of this, too. And I hate to see everything happen to it. There's a lot we can do in that community. Right now, I ride around a lot, and I see guys playing basketball. They don't even have a bathroom now. You know, you got kids out there playing, the boys going over there and behind them in the woods. That parking recreation commission, you need to ride around and look at some of these kids, some of these guys out there in that area. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just sad that we ought to put up that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other names, please?
Reverend Tarek Swir. And several months ago, I had the opportunity to put in a proposal representing a rocky corporation who was very interested in I.E.J. project. The reason why we were interested, because as a former school board member, we just kind of saw the disposal of several schools, which I happen to be a part of, that, even the East Larnburg project. And one of the things that kind of struck me was the fact that with all the disposal of all these schools, that I.E.J. became, you know, one of these buildings that got hung up in the process. And so, with that said, I know that, you know, these projects are going to cost a lot of money. It's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money, and I certainly won't go against the fact that they would want to corral and use tax dollars to support any venture in there. But the proposal that we submitted was one that was going to support the kids, was going to meet the needs within the community. And I do believe that we can get a whole lot more accomplished if we didn't worry about, you know, who was going to be in charge of that project. If we just come together, and some of the things that they offered are the same things that we begin to offer. And so, you know, my thing is, for you all to really kind of consider that. And certainly, I'm one to put my money where my mouth is, and I do believe that. If you guys were faced with a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar deficit, you know, we would go ahead on and propose that if we were able to make an agreement, certainly with the people that sit here, we would, we would, you know, certainly take on half of that, the deficit. So, when you all say that you all paid fifty-seven thousand dollars for ten years, we'll be paying twenty-eight thousand dollars for ten years to assist you in that, to ensure that we're able to move that, that this project forward. We, currently, our organization had, you know, four such buildings in different counties. And one of the things that, when we started doing initially in Richmond County, we found that, you know, there were one, there were two buildings that we were interested in. And one of the buildings is in the corner of County Home Road, and that building was a nice building. But after a lot of delay, a lot of fussing, a lot of complaining, a lot of fighting, there was a fight in the building because they had squatters, and then now the roof is caving in, and all of a sudden, there's a for-sale sign in there, but it's only a demolition project. So, we want you to definitely give this consideration, give our proposal a second look, and even take time to put us on the restoration kit. I'm pretty sure there are many people here that would like to be a part of the restoration committee to be able to give you all some, you know, insight. I went to Johnson in the third grade, whether you believe it or not, but in the same token, that was a part of my commitment. that was a part of my commitment. We were up in the community grass, AKA wood grass section of town. And so, I understand what's going on there. They're from Prodders Market Road and I'm a grandmother who's in Port Street. So, I too, believe it or not, do have some history and some stake in there. And once again, review the project, which I've sent to every public official in Scotland County. Take a look at, take a second look at that. We have the revenue and the finances and after a NDA, we can go in and discuss your concerns about paying for it and what our plan will be to solidify that position to make sure that it remains accounting good. Thank you for your time. Thanks, Terrance.
Reverend Terrance?
Yes.
First of all, fantastic city, I haven't seen you in years. Really nice, good to see you. Would you give us the name of the organization?
Uh, it's ROC, R O C I N C, and that's reaching our children in need of choices.
Okay, very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on another subject? Yes, ma'am. Give us their name and your address, please.
My name is Gypsy Murdock, Reverend Gypsy Murdock. My address actually is 514 Araton Street, Rollin', North Carolina. So, I am from Robinson County, but I am very much invested in Scotland County. I served Scotland County as a pastor for nine years, still serve in two churches in Maxton, North Carolina. And I am the chairperson of Partners in Ministry Board of Directors and Advisory Board. I'm also one of the founding board board members from back in 2007. And just wanted to say, you know, when you sit here and I grew up in these same communities, I'm in Robinson County, and you know, we have just gone through the loss of so many schools, especially on our end of the county. And you hear about all of these schools closing and they're closing in impoverished communities that people found, that people found grounded, way before integration, that people found hope in. And so, you hear so much, but the God I serve is a God of everything. So, I believe that he can provide for all our needs, that we don't have to choose, pick and choose. And so, I wanted to just share that Partners in Ministry has, from the very beginning, invested in Scotland County for 14 years. We started in almost a closet and our district superintendent's former house and office down on 74 Business, down on Church Street. And we grew from there, we went to Gibson and used that church and did work there to restore that building, ended up at East Lambert, put over $600,000 into that building to restore that school. And so, we have invested much in restoring a school already. We know what that takes. That took not only over $600,000 in money, but that took countless hundreds of thousands of volunteer hours from people all over the country, not just people here. We search people everywhere, no mask, other groups that come in and help restore that building, who still come in and give volunteer hours to this community. And so, we just wanted to share that we understand the plight of Iowa's Johnson. We join forces with them and understanding the plight of that. But we believe that now we have invested in East Lambert, there's 11 acres of land there, and it's time for our children to have a top of a class, a crime building. It's time for our children to have that. It's time for them to quit feeling as if they're constantly being part of a restoration plan. And so, again, we join Iowa's Johnson, we're not in conflict with them. We know that the board, that commissioners have a budget, the county has a deficit. We join Reverend Williams and all of, all of the rest of you and understanding these things and understanding that your plight is our plight because the children we serve, senior citizens we serve, many of them are from the Iowa's Johnson community, the Lincoln Heights community. And so, we're all in this together. And so, my prayer is that this commission will, will be able, that God will give you some creativity that only is divine, to be able to support all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe Commissioner McCullough has joined his platform.
I didn't listen, I just jumped in. I'm a dancer.
The camera is just showing more screen.
Yeah, I see the lights in the building, yeah.
Okay, I will close the form at this time. We actually have on the agenda, we have a conversation about Iowa's Johnson. We will get to that very shortly, in just a few minutes, if you'll just bear with us. We have a consent agenda here. Do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved? Motion by Commissioner BJ Gibson, second by Commissioner Fattner. All in favor, signify by saying aye. If opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Single family housing grant update, Adrian Lowry, is he here?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. If I may take a moment, my name is Adrian Lowry. I used to be employed by the Lomond River Council Government, so I worked there for about 18 years, working on housing programs for our five county region, which included Scotland County. I was able to work with Commissioner Austin, Commissioner Fattner, even Commissioner McCullough, Commissioner Bob Davis, who was here previously. So, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself. I want to talk to you about a review of the Scotland County 2017 Single Family Rehab Program and give you an update on the new 2020 program. When I left the council governments back in 2017, I had a lot of these programs applied for and were available. And I think the thought process at that time was the council government was going to be able to operate these programs. But then, the pandemic hit and there's not any money for administration in these programs. So, I think the Lomond River Council Government decided not to provide any housing programs. So, I received an email or phone call from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency and they were asking me about the Scotland County program. They said, what's going on? There's no houses done. Can you see what's going on? I was able to reach out to Kevin, the opportunity came about for me to be able to work on this program, and so we started work. Mind you, this was during the COVID time. This program called for five units to be done for $170,000. So, we hit the ground running, we made phone calls, we made contacts, and when all was said and done, we were able to do 15 units. And I think that's the next slide. We had to do 15 households in Scotland County. So, instead of doing five, we did 15. Instead of bringing in $170,000, if you hear that, Mr. Kevin, we were bringing in $515,848 from North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. I do want to thank President Pierce, he's part of that state group and makes that program available through home phones, and that is a very vital program for our community. I want you to know that when you're in Raleigh. I do have some special guests here this evening, if you'll hit that next screen for me, Mr. Kevin. I do have Miss Olly Mae Williams here, she's at 506 Critters Street, you go to the next slide. She was one of the participants, this is her home. She, she might tell you some of her story, but this is the home she grew up in and then she went away and she came back, and this home had a lot of issues. If you had the next slide for Mr. Kevin, this is the back side. You go to the next one. As you can see right here, you might not be able to tell, but to the right of her stove on this wall, her kitchen, her floor was literally sinking in. It's just an older home. And so, if you go to the next slide, we were able to come with this program and remove those cabinets, take up that floor, burner into new cabinets, some new, for my cook countertops. And then the next slide, please. And we were able to take that stove that only had two burners working and we were able to replace it. We were able to give a new water heater, she claimed that the water heater she had was 40 years old. Is that right, Ms. Olly? And if you go to the next slide. And this is Ms. Olly with front porch, Ms. Olly, if you stand up. The next special guest I have is Ms. Linda Jones, she's at 1307 U Street. From that side, does that not look like a pretty home? But you all know as well as I do, you can't judge a book by its cover. There's a lot of issues she had going on. We went in and put a new HVAC system, GFCIs in her bathrooms, a lot of homes don't have this, you know that that's a fire hazard, and that's very important. Part of what this program does is look at the safety issues that are going on. This program previously used to apply $40,000 for us to do rehab work, and we looked for moderately deteriorated homes. Well, the Housing Finance Agency said, listen, we're not addressing enough for the homes that need more assistance. So, now, we only have $25,000, but we go into a unit and we try to address what is critical. A lot of times, that's going to be flooring, that's going to be plumbing, that's going to be roofing, or senior citizens, a lot of time, that's going to be HVAC because they have fans and window units. Window units cost money. So, this is one of the things that's very good about this program. The other thing about Ms. Olly, before I get back to Ms. Linda, she had lead-based paint in her unit that we found. Grandkids come over to play, guess what they're breathing? Lead-based paint. It might affect you differently, didn't affect me, but we were able to go in there and remove that and didn't do the work there. Next slide. On Ms. Linda, her outside, we normally don't do windows in this program, but her windows were deteriorated to the point when Florence came through, water was on the inside of her house. So, we were able to replace those windows. Closet doors. This does not seem like a big deal, but these two ladies were selected by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency to monitor the work that we do. We had no say-so in that. So, when we were going through this process, she moved those doors and Ms. Linda, she weren't worried about any other stuff that occurred because since she moved in our house, those doors had never worked. And that was the most excited she was about the fact that she had closet doors and she could close. She was really excited about that. And that's Ms. Linda. So, commissioners, if y'all would like to ask any questions, I wanted to bring them here so you could see them and ask any questions if you like. Ms. Linda, if you would stand up, she's over in the corner. Ms. Olly, Ms. Linda, would y'all like to say anything to the commissioners?
Well, I would like to say I appreciate everything that we've done because like Mr. Larry said, I had issues when I moved in there, the closet door. Now I'm not. And me personally, I think the house was really ugly. Your wife arrived by.
Can we drop out for breakfast?
I do that.
I appreciate the work that we've done and hope that maybe we can make, like Mike did with the game, we can get on, just, thank you so much.
Thank you both for being here.
We've developed a really good relationship with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Partners in Ministry is here also, the Urgent Repair Program, which is a sister program. I know they have a wonderful reputation with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. These two ladies were wonderful to deal with, but they can tell you like I can. Sometimes with some folks, you just can't leave. I just want to thank God that you chose these two ladies to monitor. Typically, when they come in, partners in ministry tell you, Housing Finance Agency, they're very, they will get on their house, if there's three feet of insulation missing from another house, they will find it. So, when they monitored those units, we passed refined colors, no issues with the paperwork. They were very excited, especially by those people who did 15 units. So, that 2017 program wasn't assessed. And if I can, the final thing I want to talk to you about is an update on our 2020 Essential Single Family Rehab Program. That $25,000 has been bumped up to $30,000. So, we've got some more money. That seems like a lot of money, but I can tell you, if you go and price plywood, two by fours, two by sixes, shingles, insulation, you will find that things have tripled almost in price. So, we do have $30,000 more dollars, we have $190,000 to be designated for Scotland County. We're going to be targeting five households. There are a couple of minor changes to the program, Mr. Kevin, if you'll hit that. One, you go to the next one, one is the change in, in, in the cost, and if you go to the next one. Applications are now available. The commissioners, each one of you have a packet, you have five applications. Those applications can also be picked up in Scotland County. I would like to tell you, board, that it's been a pleasure to work with Kevin and his staff and especially Ms. Lynn Poeh. Ms. Lynn Poeh is the glue because when I say, do you know my Linda Jones? She says, yes, that's my brother's aunt's cousin. She knows almost as many people as Commissioner Crawford and Commissioner Curtis. Almost as many people. And the other thing that we're going to do a little bit differently, and this was by suggestion of the manager, there's going to be a designated place on the county's webpage. So, when your application comes in, citizens, your name will go in there so you can go on the Scotland County webpage and see if your application's been received and where it is at in the process. Also, there's going to be a status update on the program so you can track whose house has been done, if your house is next, and how much money's in the program. So, those are just a couple of changes that are coming up for the new program. So, commissioners, if you got any questions?
Well, first of all, it's good to see you again. What a long time at Schel, what was that house, house era called? Scott House.
Scott House, City VG.
But I want you to know, way room and some of the Scotland County, Lambert era, we are getting ready for your 2020 time for your, for the grant. So, look out, we have applications there while you're waiting. So, when you think it was, you start looking at these applications.
Well, what we want to do for the next two weeks is hit the Lambert Exchange, do a couple radio programs locally, get the program out, and then allow applications to come in for about 45 to 60 days. We're also going to reach out to Partners in Ministry to see if there's any applications that they might have available, and then from that point, we'll start grading applications. So, probably sometime around October, November, we'll start doing inspections on our units.
Okay.
And I will say, there was one other person that was monitored from Laurhill, Mr. Wilbur Smith, but unfortunately, he had a stroke and he's in the VA, so he was not able to come.
Any other questions? Mr. Lowry, we have a lot of people here who I'm sure will be interested. Could you just briefly share what some of the qualifications are for this project?
Absolutely. 62 years, somebody in the unit has to be 62 years of age or older. There has to be at least $5,000 worth of work that needs to be done. If you have anybody that's disabled or you have any type of lead poisoning involving children. Also, there's a new requirement now that involves veterans. So, now there is an opening for veterans. You do have to be 80% of the median income. I can get that information, it has been updated for the new year to put, and you do have to provide your income for 2020. This is a forgiven loan program. So, what that means, and this is where some, some folks get kind of worried about the program, we do have to put a deed of trust that is held by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency against the program. However, that's only for a period of about eight to 10 years, depending on how much work we do. Once that period is over, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency will contact you and they will release that deed of trust. The only way you're at that paying any money back is if you sell that home. At that point, whatever's not been forgiven, is forgiven at a rate of $3,000 to $5,000 per year. So, each year, your anniversary date was around, instead of you making a payment, the state says, hey, we're forgiving that $3,000. But if you have to sell, and we did have a person in Hope County one time who moved away to family in Arizona, so half of the money was still available, so they, after the sale, they had to supply half of that money back to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So, that's the basic requirements.
Thank you. What about air property?
Air property, as long as all the areas agree to sign the deed of trust. Typically, we can do it, but there's always seems to be that one person who's mad at somebody who just wants to sign that deed of trust. And the other thing, which is important for folks to realize, please make sure that you got a will, make sure you're updating your deeds, because a lot of times, when the state does these title searches, they'll find out that there was never a will, and then it's a fight for us to try to determine who the legal heirs are, and that, it can be very complicated.
Any other questions?
I just want to say this, and I wonder if I could ask Representatives Pierce to just stand for a minute for one second, maybe two seconds. I've been on this board about 18 years and I worked with Adrian in this housing project for 15 years.
At least.
At least. And he can take a couple hundred thousand, when it ends up, he'll end up with 800,000. He doesn't live in Scotland County, but you'd think he did, and Representative Pierce of all... And Representative Pierce have always supported the housing programs in Raleigh. And I think it's one of the most important programs that we have that's state-funded. And I just want to thank Representative Pierce and Adrian Lowery for being so dedicated to this housing program. They can pick money, and they make it happen. He could stretch money. He took five houses, stretched 15 houses for Scotland County. Representatives Pierce and Adrian, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is a discussion about our house. We've got, I think, three members of this board who are part of that committee. We don't, I think there also was an inspection that was conducted outside. Would you like to start with that before?
I'll start off and then Commissioner Alford and I'll have to take over. Our committee for IJ, the IJ Restoration Committee, the initial committee, consisted of myself, Commissioner Alford, Commissioner Ivey, along with our school board member, Dr. Patterson. I'm glad to see you this evening. Summer Woodside and Herman Tyson, and from the city of Norberg, Mr. Don Rayner. And Mary Jo Adams was originally on that committee, but Mr. James Garvey has replaced her. When we met on the 21st of July, we kind of left from every board with, "You need to come up with a number. You need to figure out a number of what it's going to cost." And so try and help us move into that direction so that we can make this project happen. There were three things that we all agreed we felt like needed to happen. The first was that the school had offered the building over to the county. Of course, by general statute, that's a woman that has to go, and the county initially said that they did not want the school. And so the school board had to go back to revisit whether they would offer it to us at no fee or if they would sell it to the county. And the school board has decided that again, they are offering that building over to the county at no expense. And so at some point, we've got to decide if we're going to accept it or reject it again. The second thing that we felt was important was to find out what it took to operate that school building. And you all see here on the screen, during the last year of that school's operation, 1819, there was a fee of $84,805 is what it took to operate utilities and landscaping for the school system on that building. 2021 is what has happened, of course, since that building has been closed. And so the school is still spending $38,000 in operating that building, although it's closed because utilities and all those things still have to be taken care of. So this gives us a burst out of what it takes to operate that school. And of course, with all the things that we've talked about, it would not take that $84,000 because in the year looking report. Of course, the school would not all be operated when you first started. It would be a phased situation. And then the other thing is, in the cafeteria, which is where most of the utility or electricity costs came from, all of that commercial equipment has been removed. And we don't really foresee an initial reason to have to operate a commercial kitchen in any of the things that we discussed. The third thing that we felt was important was to have an inspection done. Mr. Alford has shared that a number of times, that we need an inspection, need an inspection. And so we asked our county building inspector to go out and do an inspection. I've not had time to look at this. Mr. Patterson just shared it with me. But he did share 12 things in front of you that he felt like would need to be addressed as you move in. And some of those things, just for the public, I'll share. There are exposed wires in the kitchen area, and of course, we know that's because all that commercial equipment's been used. The units for 2017, 2017, 2007, 2008, there was a flat roof that needs to be replaced. Water was standing on the roof. Honings would need to be repaired or replaced. The gym floor would need to be replaced. Locker rooms need to be repaired and painted. Need the demo. Old buildings outback. Parking lot needs to be repaid. Grounds and playground equipment will need some work. Boiler and piping will need to be inspected or removed, and the old freezer and freezer in the kitchen area needs to be removed. Just looking at this, our committee meets again tomorrow. And some of what we shared initially was that once, as elected officials, we decided that yes, this was something that we were going to pursue, or no, it was not, then we were going to venture out and have city and county and school employees brought to the table to talk about some vision that they may have. And then we can also, as Bishop Williams talked about, bring our community members in for them to be a part of that as well. That's really my report. That's where we are. You see what the numbers look like. It's going to take money, but it's not going to take a lot of money, I don't think. And when I say not a lot, I'm comparing that to the money in my pocket as opposed to the county's budget. People would be alive if I hadn't been there. But as a county, it's not a lot of money, especially when you know that you're born back into an uncertain future.
Well, I, you know, just to kind of echo what Bishop said, you know, we've been leaving now. We've left two, four meetings, right? We meet tomorrow afternoon. We get that intention, we want to get these numbers and stuff together. Some of this, I'm not sure it would be something we had to do right away or at all. Some of it we made, but I mean, we've been through that building now. I've been through it three times. And there's nothing leaking in it. The heating and air system work. Everything's there except kitchen stuff now. It's all been removed. We know that's where the wiring and stuff is showing up is in there. The benefit to me for that facility, the gymnasium part of it, is its air conditioning. And that makes a big difference when you try to use that facility. It's already air-conditioned, but I didn't put air conditioning in. So we're still way early in the process. Nobody's committed anything yet. And I'll tell you that, we need to prove the file. But we had to get that all rolling somewhere. This is what we came out of that last meeting. And so when we meet tomorrow, we'll come back together with these numbers with this report, and then we'll see what the other boards, you know, they want to start doing because I think they've all had meetings now since our last meeting to talk about it. And I haven't heard anything from them about it. But my position on this, and this goes back two years. It doesn't go back just here in the last little bit, was that's a great, that's 60,000 square feet of opportunity for that to use. And is it new? No. Is it going to be new if we spend whatever on it? No. But it's a facility that can be used, and can be used right away, pretty much. You know, we know about the open, it has to be poured out. We've known about that building. I think we used to call it the shop. We know that's got to be torn down. But we've known that going in. So there's all kinds of ideas. I would challenge you to come and listen to me tomorrow and just listen to the ideas that come, you know, people are rolling out of their heads, which is great, which is what we need. But we're getting to the point that Mr. Alford made the last time we talked about it, is it starts and stops with the money. What's it going to take to run it? What's it going to run it and to run it right? What's it going to take to keep it up? We know what it's going to cost us a year roughly to operate utilities and landscaping and all that stuff. And then how do we, what do we use each little piece for? It's not going to be one gigantic, one operation going on. It's going to be different things going on in different places in the building. So I'm rambling, so I'll stop.
I'm trying to be brief, you know, until I was thrown up fat. First of all, I'm going to assume most of you know Commissioner Alford. I have lived on that side of the track for 44 years. I could have lived anywhere in Scotland County. But I choose to live not far from Johnson School and not far from the playground that Mr. McCann referenced. And I know all about the bathroom issue. We tried. If you can't have a public bathroom outside, I'm a member with you. We need them, but we have one. We're experimenting with this. They need money, and others have committed to giving them all the money that they will need to get this project going. But they need commitment from the county to put in some money. They're asking for $450,000. Frankly, that may not be doable, but you can work with something less than that. I support something. Johnson's, all of you hear from Johnson? Charles, you? I knew about Johnson before he did. I'm old. We laugh at jokes, so. I used to sing in that gym. One of his schoolmates and I, we used to play the piano. We thought we could sing. So I'm familiar with the gym. The school is part of me as well. That was a rivalry back in that day, Johnson and Carr. And so I'm committed, but it's all about the money. I can tell you, the $84,000 up there, it would cost more than a year to operate Johnson. It would cost more than that. But that's not much money if it's coming from all of us, from the county budget. Can we do it? Well, we need the city to come in as well. We need some other partners. But is it doable? Of course it is. We just have to work through it and make it happen. And we need to know that you will stay with us, not just come tonight. We're going to need you some other times. But we can make this happen. To what level, to what extent, how quickly, I don't know that. But we just have to stay with it. We can't say we can't do it because this is Scotland County. We are Scotland County. We can make this work. To what extent, all of that is to be figured out. And I want to thank you for coming. Some folks say, "Well, when you come, they intimidate." No, no, when you come, you're coming to take a part in your county. And you're not demanding anything. You're just saying, "It's what we need to do." And whatever's in our trade is your money. We're just a custodian of it. We don't have a lot of it. But maybe we can make this work, and I want you to know, I'm not against anything. I will ask questions that will make you back there sometimes because I know it has to be paid for. We can jump at it, but then we don't want to jump in it and have to jump right out of it. So I just want to say this before you leave. I hope you stay at home meeting. But I still thank you for your participation. It gives me something to work with. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to add on to my rambling earlier that what you're doing tonight, there's two other places that need to be done because we're looking, as Alford said, partners with the school board and the city. So we can't, we can't do this by ourselves. So they're going to have to hear the same things before. I'm not saying before they get on board, because nobody's committed anything, but I'm encouraging you to do that as well.
Let me ask something of the three members who've already made comments. You're not expecting to operate this on $84,000 to $100,000 a year. Surely, there's going to have to need to be some improvements of some kind to this property. Or not?
So our conversation is that there will need to be some initial monies put up to repair some of the things that have been listed to make it presentable. Thereafter, of course, there's the operations costs that are there. And as I was talking with Mr. Patterson, I don't, we don't envision the county being responsible for any more salaries than what we offer in Waygrom and we're going to do at Laur Hill. A director and a part-time person. We don't, I mean, that will be enough for the staffing because as Mr. Ivey said, we want to partner with other agencies to help provide that. So in our minds, there's going to be an initial number that says, "We need this amount of money to rehab that building and make it what we want it to be." And we're not trying to make it a new building. We know it's not a new building. And I do want to say this, you know, Commissioner Ivey helped me to see it a whole lot better. You know, he said, "I'm like that building. I'm going to say, he said, "I'm 60 years old." You don't throw me away. You just buy another useless one." And so that's where we are with Johnson. It does not work as a school building at all. But it will work, we believe, for this effort. I want to also say that what Commissioner Ivey said is certainly true. My board members sound a whole lot better tonight than they did last month when y'all were not here. So you do need to show that the city, you need to show the school board, because your presence does make a difference.
I would like to say that none of us on the board of commissioners are saying we're against Johnson School, IJ. All we were asking for some, what would be the financial obligations? What plan you have to pay for the renovation and getting the building up and running? Those were the kind of questions that may have dropped on some people's minds, but those are questions that we felt like we needed to know what was the financial plan, you know? And so that was a part that, it may appear that we were against it, but it was that we just wanted what was, how it was going to pay, how much it was going to cost to get up and running. And that was the question.
And two, I think, an additional question for me was a and I have no idea what it would cost to bring this up to the condition that we want, that we would be proud of and we could do all the things we want to do. And if we were going to spend that much money, would you still want to put it in this building? Or would you use it on the same property and do something, build a new one? And that's, to me, I'm committed to doing something there. I just don't want to spend a whole bunch of money on a building that we could say we wish we had go ahead and build a new one. So have y'all had that conversation?
We have not.
Let me respond. We have not, and I'll tell you why we have not. Every time a new building comes up, I hear what Mr. Alford says, that it has to be a tax referendum, and it's not happening that way. Would we want new? I'm just saying, certainly, to a certain extent. Because there is still history in that building that I think these citizens want us to preserve.
And I understand that completely, and I admire that and agree with it. But I don't want any of us to regret that because we're still going to be in a, I would say, 70-year-old building.
If new can happen, as it has happened with Laur Hill, and there not have to be any additional taxes, because Laur Hill did not acquire any additional taxes. If that can happen, I think new will be valuable.
Mr. Chairman? Having been involved in rehabbing buildings, at least four buildings here in Scotland County.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak.
Carol, 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 okay, hold on just a second. Mr. Carter has the floor right now.
If we were to do cover, there are signs there, for example. You have to have plumbing, has to be done by a licensed electrician. You have to have I mean, not plumbing, but the electrical has to be done by a licensed person. And then the plumbing has to be done by a licensed person. And they should have a minimum $3,000 per bathroom or whatever exists. So I'm saying, if we wanted to do a a person to train for, to do a half, my mind is tied up. Yeah. Anyway, you would have to do plumbing and electrical to set it up. And we have to work through those things because you will be talking $20,000 bucks to do just one particular area. It would be costly. The cost is real high now. But those are the things we have to work. But those are the things we have to work together on. You have to understand that. The operational costs will not get a new business started. That would have nothing to do with that. So there's a lot of costs here, but it's not something we can't work through. We just need to know it going in. So then the question goes back to what the chairman just said. When you spend this thirty thousand on this one room, and you spent this, do we need to talk about a new building? Doesn't have to be a gigantic building there, but big enough to make sense. So we have to put all that on the table, and we can make something happen. We just don't know what it'll look like right now. But can it happen? Of course.
Mr. Dalton, I think Mr. Baddo is next.
To the citizen here. I'm here with Coach Alfer. I can't hear you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna shoot the code yet. I'm here to help y'all. I'm your voice. He talked about twelve negatives. What about eighty-eight projects? Eighty-eight projects running the school. He talked about landscaping thirteen, two, thirteen dollars, two hundred. Landscaping, from my perspective, landscaping was private sector. The county gonna do it. This is gonna be a county building. That's gonna be eliminated. That's gonna be eliminated, because county will take care of that rain. They're gonna land steep. That's gonna be out the way. When the storm, as Mr. Alfer said, this is Law Hill. Oh, their project's four million dollars or plus. I asked for four million dollars.
Two million dollars.
This eliminates almost four years. By the time we get to, it might be four. When they get finished, it might be four. I'm just throwing out big numbers. Now, this project here, we already, they two operated a year ago, maybe two years ago, in that same building. It ain't, it ain't that old enough. We not asking for three million dollars. They asking for peanuts. They asking, this is peanuts. I'm glad y'all here, but you see we working. You see we working.
Thank you. Mr. Dalton?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Dalton. Can everyone hear me? Because my audio today has been weak, so I haven't caught every word that has been said. But I'll go forward. I made a list of bullet points. It was October fifth of twenty twenty that the Capitol Committee recommended to the board not taking I U J or South Scotland. And it was a unanimous vote, possibly looking at if there were interested partners. And I know that, you know, the citizen interest in partners is ongoing. Do we have, and I don't expect an answer right now, do we have any partners with money in hand to make this concept go forward? The costs is gonna be discussed for some time. We have some idea of the annual cost, but we have this list that came from the inspections Department. And the first thing that jumped out at me was flat roofs got to be replaced. We know what that costs, water drainage roofs, and jet fuel replaced, if we will be able to use it, so on and so on. So I've got this, all of those, we've all seen them. So it isn't about cost. Also, in creating a South County Community Resource Center, we would be taking the lead, and I understand that, but that thing's almost a government expansion. And I would foresee that we would need to have a staff person in that building five days a week, a lot, because someone's got to be responsible for that building. To maintain it, for opening it, to clean, so what department that it is that the county would oversee it? Another impact is on our Building and Grounds Department. I think that department is pretty much at its max, and that's a large campus to maintain, Building and Grounds. The next point is that one thing that I always look at and ask thirty years is how we avoid the duplication of services. We have heard from partners in ministry and I, we also have the Rainbow Sixty-Six operating Washington Park. So I would often have to look to see how the county can support and enhance these local organizations that are ongoing services. And build on the existing resources that we have in Scotland County. And last is something that has been mentioned, is that we're talking about a seventy-year-old building that we're trying to resurrect. There was a reason that it was closed. It was classed as ongoing for children, back in staff. So what makes it good for this concept? I don't quite know how to answer that to myself. So I have to look to those visions and answer it. A community resource center in that area of the city is a viable concept, but I don't know that the building that we're talking about holds the viability that we need to go forward.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
He wants more address, he loves.
I want a little more too, because we can go back and hold on, but I do want to say this. I think for me, part of my, I guess, I'm becoming a little frustrated, because every time these conversations are had, it's like we're talking to somebody else, when we are the ones who have to answer these questions if we want to make it happen. And so we keep saying, well, we gotta get this done, we gotta get that done. And it's like preaching to the choir. If we want to make it happen, we are the elected commissioners who have to answer these questions and make it happen. I am all for supporting partners in ministry and Rainbow Sixty-Six and anybody else, and I hope that we will. But our citizens do not pay their taxes to partners in ministry or Rainbow Sixty-Six. The idea of passing the buck on, if we don't help somebody else do it, is not enough when when we owe this to our citizens to provide something, particularly in that community, and we've all talked about the fact that when you get to the railroad tracks and you go back, there's nothing. And I don't mind saying, because it's been said over a number of times, that I was a part of the school board when we closed I U J. That happened as a result, as we know, of the commissioners asking the school board to consolidate some of what we're doing about buildings. It was the right thing to do. Again, if we're gonna, you know, when Ms. McCall talks about, you know, what we're doing in this building or whatnot, and I would give if it means something new, put something new. But I think we gotta admit that something has to be done in that community. And right now, we got that building. Why not do what we can and we have it? But again, and I'm doing, all these questions we keep asking, until we hand this over to our county manager, and I'm not saying this to put you out there, but Kevin gets paid all the good money, not us. And Kevin, I think, is just waiting on us to say, yes, this is what we want to do, and as our manager, he'll make it happen. But I think we keep passing the buck around, and I know we're not gonna get, but at some point, we gotta say, yes, we're gonna do it. Kevin, keep these studies doing, whatever he need to do, because we're not in a position to really draw those things.
But what we're saying, we're saying that even, yeah, that is a good idea of doing that with Kevin. But all we asking for you is a plan of what it's gonna cost the county to do it. And make sure that we, you know, we want to do it, but we just want to know what it is gonna cost. And I think as representative of taxpayers of Scotland County, as commissioners, we have a responsibility to know that. It's not that simple. We want to dream about, but it is our responsibility as commissioners to know what things will cost.
Well, let me say this. State that there, when we did Waverham, we didn't state that when we did Law Hill, like, cause, cause, we talking about Johnson, talking about Laurinburg in the black neighborhood. Stop shooting code.
But I will say this to you, my only thing is, I'm trying to do my due diligence to get that number, whatever, but every time the conversation comes, it's a question. All I'm asking is if you all are joined forces, and let's answer these questions. You know for yourself, you've been a commissioner much longer than I have, so I'm trying to learn the ropes of how you all get this stuff done, and I ask you privately, help me get it done.
So let me say this, Commissioner. The first thing we have to do is get our partners lined up and get the money in place. So until we do that, you know, all this other, that's the going back and forth. The first thing we have to do is just to sit it. We can't, it's tax bill, these other folk, nonprofits, asking them to come in and do this, we're probably wasting our time. We have to go through the city who collect taxes. I've been around a long time and see what they're upon the earth. Once they commit to something, then we can commit to something. That's the first step. That's what we have to do. So we can be twenty times, but until we get the money in place, we can't go to step two. That's the going back and forth.
Can I respond to that one?
Yes, sir.
Two things I want to say. The first is that if, and I told you all this at our last meeting, the city and school has already said that they will support. They are not gonna be the leading agents. And the reason that they're not gonna be it is because our budget is, of course, much larger than the schools or the city. And the second thing, and I don't want to stay in a battle of Law Hill and this building, but there were no partners. There are no partners for Law Hill. We are putting, and it's not for, the number I've seen is three million dollars. We didn't ask the law, nobody to partner. We did. So we can't keep putting the blame on, the city got, the city is not gonna commit a dollar until we say that what we're gonna do. I know that. The schools are not gonna commit until our board commits. It's not gonna happen.
Your suggestion that it somehow get turned over to the county manager, was that intent for him to come up with some of the cost estimates? Or is that something that?
What he referring to is if we say, here's what our vision is, and here's what we're willing to fund it, and here's what we're doing, then that goes into Kevin's bucket to take care of. I mean, you would agree with that. But we have to say, here's what we're gonna spend on, here's what our vision is for, here's what the partners are gonna do with it. And then it goes out of our wheelhouse into somebody that's gonna manage it, or close the door.
So if you're gonna come up with that dollar figure, where is that gonna come from?
We are meeting tomorrow to look at some of these things that Mr. Willman shared, and hopefully that will help us to move into that direction. And my hope is that when we come back in our September meeting, we can say, we recommend from our committee, it'll take X amount of dollars to get it started, and X amount of dollars to operate a year, and Mr. Alfer offered the suggestion that we try to put a five-year operational plan together. And that's what we hope we can do tomorrow before our September meeting.
If we waited until then to accept the property, is that acceptable?
I think we can. Don't make it. Can y'all give us a few more weeks?
I didn't know it was a deadline, but I think it may be.
I think we should be okay.
I believe we need to go forward with this part. I do think we need some additional information, but I'm committed to this part. I don't know how to say that any differently without saying to be responsible. I think we have, we have to know a little more. Anybody else? I think we have talked about this a good bit. Absolutely, we are better off of you being here with us. Thank you.
One thing that I am want to ask of is, as you're looking for I need a better concept of the community center. Because I am not the guy who does the more impression feeling thing, and many of you know me. And your definition of a community center is far different than mine. If you have a concept of what services you want offered on the property, that's gonna help me looking at things. We can come up and get, and that's the one route, no problem. But, you know, I've heard D S S, I've heard Health Department, I've heard having the Health Department there is a completely different thing than having an office for the Sheriff's Department. And there are gonna be costs on those different things. If y'all can come up with a vision, not guarantee you'll need that. But if you come up with some of the services you want to provide to the community at this location, that's gonna help me come back in and get in and determine the cost. And that's where I've always been, you know.
We have too long.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, I think one of the things that you talked about is getting input from some of these other folks and the brainstorming. And I think that's a great idea.
Because when we initially made that statement about this building, I think April Steen from D S S was at, and she, yes, because she needs the space. So we can, after we meet tomorrow, we'll send that to Kevin then, and that's simple, not long.
Where are we meeting?
Our building. Our building in the town.
We are through with this conversation. You are all welcome to stay with us, and if you wish to leave, we'll give you that opportunity.
It's not my place.
So we can't.
I'm saying, I haven't even get in there. I got like, you know, I was just wondering. I went to. Word to that.
I love that tone of thing. I know, I know.
I'm bringing a whole hill next to it.
Where's the door asking here?
Okay, John, can you come back with us, please? Any help?
I saw Tim dump that. What'd you guys?
Right there.
This is my dinner.
Okay. I think Kyle Johnson was next on the agenda.
Or Hill.
Sorry, it's Laurhill.
And this primarily is just, is there because of standing before the final contract, the construction contracts have been executed. They executed them last week. So, so groundbreaking is, yes, next week. Whatever you want to get out there, take a shovel, but not in this, I've been telling people, not in this calendar year.
Whoa.
You're talking about the break, right? Yes.
Will be the first of the year.
Yeah, that's, that's half the contract time that he's got to do. Uh, I mean, that's two hundred. Ended it out because it would be, it takes six months.
I know, but what I'm saying, that's two hundred days of his, of his time to build it. I don't, I, I mean, that's a lot of stuff from going out there at the steel buildings, what's causing the delays. I don't think it is to the extent they're trying to put it off. There's a lot of work can go on out there between now and then. I mean, I, I don't, because now we're talking about going into another fiscal year before it's even completed.
Yes.
And, and I just think we need to build fire and somebody, and I don't know who that somebody behind is, but somebody behind that fire builder about this thing. We have drug this on longer and.
Well, I already said that they can't get the equipment, so you think that they can do landscaping or something? What else can they do?
I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
But they're telling us this stuff about these metal buildings and that ain't the case. If you go out into market, that ain't the case. And, and I understand why they're doing it because if something happens, they wanted that longer time to do that. My point is, is there's a lot of stuff can go on at that place before the metal ever comes in. That setting system's gotta be redone, the, the, the site prep's gotta be done, the concrete padding, all the piping and all that stuff can be done while they're waiting on that building. And I just feel like it's getting drugged and drugged and drugged and drugged. And, and I just think we need to put a fire and somebody behind it about this. And, and because we're talking about the next fiscal year.
Well, so can we ask our engineers, uh, the people that, uh, that, that, uh, we, uh, or our architect that did it, right, did the plan, whoever did the plans and everything, is, uh, what would keep them from moving forward with some of these things that you suggested?
I, I don't.
I don't know anything about buildings.
I don't know what the architect would tell us on that. I think the contractor.
What contractor tells you, is there anything they can be doing to?
Well, they can, I mean, they, if I knew I had that bid on that building, it would already be open. That would already be open and, and.
Isn't that ours?
He signed the contract.
No, it's been, it has been signed. That's what, oh, I thought you said it had. No, it hasn't.
That's what, that's what you were saying, that's what he was.
But I mean, you know, so if we follow that timeline, they put that out there, that's six months that the metal comes in, well, that's, you know, maybe January. What month is it?
Um, but there's a lot of stuff's gotta happen between now and that metal going up out there.
Maybe we should talk about contract.
That's, that's where I think.
I think that's what Tim's suggesting is that county manager make contact with contractor, find out how quickly they can get, what, what they're doing.
I think we need to put a sense of urgency in their ear.
And, and that's where we're going to wind up with the construction calendar. But right now, if you're asking me to go off and just pull the date out of my pocket, I'm not gonna do that.
I know you can't do that. I know you gotta take a safe position on that so you don't feel something wrong, but, but the rest of us sitting here at this table can, can, can push that thing a little faster and, and make it happen.
Can we ask the contractor, Kevin, when you, when you do this, will it go through? Ask him to tell us when he will have all the infrastructure in so when the building does come, he can erect it.
Yeah, and that'll be in the construction calendar when we develop that out. And it, you know, the site work, they're gonna wanna do before the building comes in. But they don't wanna do it five months before it comes in because then rain can wash out some of the pad construction. So, you know, in that, they'll know what that window is. If they're expecting the steel in January one, they know they're gonna start site work thirty, forty-five, sixty days before that happens. They're just not gonna do the site work now, knowing that they may have to redo it again because it's gonna sit there for three months with no activity.
I just think we can build a little fire over it and hopefully, and even if it goes to, to, to the building, steel manufacturer and try to move it along by what they would. But I'm not hearing that it's taking that long to steel it. I know they did it for safety and contract purposes, but just because they got four hundred days to do it, they should take it.
I, I, I agree with you. Okay. Courts and community appointments, here.
Okay, all right. Uh, we only have one person, uh, well, the, uh, agent advisor committee is wanting a board. Uh, I move that we accept your appointment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you not all in favor of seeing about the thing? Aye.
Aye.
Any votes aye? Ayes have. Thank you. Is that it? Thanks, man. Hilton Park. Is Mr. Caldwell with us?
Uh, he was, and right now, it's another great day of having fun with this system. I have no idea if he's gonna be able to speak to us.
This, this. Mr. Caldwell?
There he is.
Hold on, Mr. Caldwell, we can't hear you. I think you're on. Hold on. Thanks, Mr. Did you have something?
Really, really well. Really, I didn't like a real good job. That they have a few people in response to that to call the mission. That's.
Eli, can you hear me? If so, just nod your head. Uh, we cannot hear you. Hold on.
Okay, try it again. Eli, see if you can.
Eli, see if, see if we can hear you now. He's still, he's talking, we still cannot hear you. Yeah.
So they're not even seeing through that camera, they're seeing.
They're, they're, uh, anything YouTube is just sending in, seeing it through there, they're, uh, anybody, Eli and Carol are seeing what's on the screen. I'm getting some feed, some feedback, but can't tell if it, if.
Mr. Patterson, do you have all of the information that Mr. Caldwell is going to present to us?
I have majority of it.
Well, it's not fair to him for him to not be able to communicate with us. Mr. Caldwell, we are gonna let, uh, Mr. Patterson make your report to us. I apologize to you for us not being able to hear you.
We'll be playing with his sound system here tomorrow.
I'm still having, I even.
Uh, with this, uh, we have seen a significant increase over the last three weeks. We have gone from a low of thirteen cases fourteen weeks, uh, four weeks ago, uh, back up to eighty-four cases. Um, and those are just Scotland County residents, so that is not specifically the impact on hospital. They are also seeing a significant spike as well. Uh, with that, just some of the other demographics that we're seeing, you know, three weeks ago, as we're, at the July board meeting, we went off and talked about how we were, in total new cases, we were in the moderate risk and the percentage, we were in the low risk. And that was great news. It was the best we've been at in over a year. Uh, in the last three weeks, we are now back in the high risk in both categories. Uh, and what we are seeing now is, uh, is, I'm assuming is locally, but statewide, they're saying the vast majority of cases are still being diagnosed as the variant, the Delta variant. Uh, we're assuming that that's going to be the same thing that we're having locally. Uh, the state goes off and does the, uh, testing, the genome sequencing on the viruses so they can determine what variant it is. We don't have that ability locally. That takes a state lab to do that. Uh, but that is the most common aspect. With the information out of the CDC, the, uh, Delta variant carries about six times the viral load of the same virus that we had a year ago. Uh, so this is significantly more infectious. Um, to kind of put this in perspective, if you have the flu, chances are you're going to infect one, one and a half other people. If you had COVID last year, you were probably going to infect two to three people. Uh, if you get the Delta variant now, you are most likely going to infect six people. Uh, last year, if you had COVID, you quarantined everybody in your household, but you may have had it, your wife may not have. Uh, I know in my household, I had it, my daughter was positive. Uh, you know, others were not. Uh, with the Delta, with the Delta variant, if you have it, everybody else in your household, they are going to get it. Uh, so with this, also, uh, people who have vaccinated, have been vaccinated. Uh, of course, a vaccine has never kept you from catching a virus. It just kept, keeps you from getting, uh, sick from a virus. Uh, so even previously, you could have had, uh, the, one of the previous strains of COVID, but the viral load, the amount that your, the virus re-invested in your system, was low enough that you weren't considered a significant threat. Now, you can get it and you can commute, you can still spread it to somebody else. It's gonna be a shortened window. But with this, if you've not got, if you've not had the vaccine and you get this, you are going to infect eight. Uh, so with this, the state has gone off and pushed back out some additional, uh, require, or some additional expectations. Uh, and I think there's gonna be some dispute over this at the state, but like state offices. Uh, if you have not had, if you've not been vaccinated, uh, you have to wear a mask. The county has been doing that policy anyway. Uh, the state's going one step further than they are requiring proof of vaccinations. You know, seeing the COVID card. Uh, we have not done that yet. Uh, but one thing the health department is looking at doing or is implementing, uh, and this is because they are a health department, a health provider, is that they are going to require vaccinations of health department employees. Uh, so, uh, that is going to be one thing. And I know there's been conversations, we've had conversations with the hospital before and honestly, they were, because they've been requiring flu shots, basically, they were just waiting to pull the trigger on requiring COVID shots depending on some other issues. But we are gonna probably see some additional requirements come out. Uh, but they are driven purely by the increased threat of this strain, uh, of COVID and because it is so readily transmissible. Uh, like I said, we went from thirteen cases to eighty-four cases in a couple of weeks.
Well, you know, some of the doctors and scientists, if you say, if you say.
CDC.
CDC back from the time. But what I was saying, it just about who you gonna get, but it's, it's almost impossible to go and get the Delta virus.
Right.
That's what, what his comment was, it was kinda scary to hear him say it, but.
And again, uh, with this, the vaccines are still effective against the Delta virus variant. Again, they don't keep you from getting it and you may feel like crap, but the chance of you going to the hospital goes way down. The chance of you becoming dead because of the Delta variant with the vaccine goes way down. Uh, so the way I looked at it, last year, we were telling people, or at the end of the year, beginning of this year, we were telling people, get vaccinated. It helps, it helps you, but it also helps other people. Uh, I had this conversation with my daughter because she's going back to college in a couple of weeks and they just said, by the way, when you come back, you've got to wear masks. And she said, well, what was the purpose of getting vaccinated? So you don't become dead. That is, is that.
That is the answer.
Well, Kevin, let me ask you this. Have we seen any deaths in the last two weeks since our numbers have started?
Uh, we went from, uh, yeah, we went from, uh, and seven, and on the twelfth, we had eighty-nine. Uh, so we've had one death, actually, we had one death two weeks ago.
Was it from a virus?
Yes.
They go two deaths, yeah. Do we know that those persons were vaccinated?
I don't know.
Yeah, but I ask you a question. Have they started a new study?
No.
They said that, I heard them say that, so later in the year, they may start for the older groups of people, you know, that are more likely to be.
And some of that is the CDC, the WHO, uh, other federal health agencies, they are looking at, uh, FDA, they are looking at the effect, the efficiency, efficacy of a booster and what they think that will do. Uh, but that would probably come out in the next two months. I know Pfizer has been specifically looking at doing studies on that as well already. I'm assuming McDermott has. They've just not specifically published anything that I'm aware of on it. But the big thing of it is, is we are looking at, you know, we have gone from a low risk to a high-risk community in under three weeks. Now, with this, like EMS, they are still doing their pandemic protocol, which they've been under since December, November, which means when they show up to somebody's house, they are fully masked. They, they have full, they have full measures in place. And, you know, we still, you know, it's to the point now where for a while, we were doing pandemic protocol and dispatch. But frankly, I believe that's no longer there because it became impossible to track all the households that had it. So that's another reason why we dispatch all of our public safety. There's an assumption for public safety that it's a COVID household. But we will be looking at additional aspects, and we'll probably have more conversations as we move forward on mandated vaccinations and/or proof of vaccinations. One of the things I wanted, I'm just gonna talk about in the next aspect. Our health director's already been working, of course, been working with the health, with the hospital, working with other agencies. And he's looking at standing up a COVID protocol group that's looking at doing more aspects. Because the biggest risk not only is the contagion of this Delta variant, but also since it's so contagious, the chances of it becoming the Epsilon variant, which will probably be more dangerous to people. And so we're looking at doing, looking to stand up a group inside the health department that would be targeted more, doing more presumptive screenings, doing more proactive screenings, and some other activities.
Well, that is gonna affect us in having large groups and different things going on. We're gonna have to go back to the way it was then, you know?
The state, and the CDC has already said, even if you're vaccinated, if you're in a large group, wear a mask. So, you know, and the state guidance, CDC guidance, and I believe the health department's guidance for school system coming up in the new year, is everyone should wear a mask, vaccinated or not. And again, the vaccine, being vaccinated, you're still getting to wear a mask, you'd still probably get to wear a mask at school, but you're just so far better protected when you catch coronavirus because, as Commissioner Goldston said, chances are, you are going to catch it at some point in time. Moving, just skipping ahead to my report, looking at, the one thing I talked about last month, this coming back in with a, at least a skeleton on the recovery funds. You know, we received $3.3 million in June. I've come up with kind of an allocation that I'm presenting to you for $2,590,000, which that does include just a $500,000, which would go towards COVID. That COVID unit that the health department's looking at doing, that's a direct response to COVID. But what would happen?
I saw that. What are you talking about here? A half a billion dollars for a COVID. That's not already being done either by the hospital, the state, or federal.
At this point in time, some of this is because he's still looking to develop that. This is just doing rough allocations of funds so we can start moving in.
Well, man, that's a pretty heavy chunk there. That's, I, I was just curious as to what, because I know we're not entirely.
Done with that.
And, and all the other expenses are being covered by state or federal, so, but, um, anyway, I'm sorry, wait.
And we might not, hopefully, we won't use that. That can be reallocated somewhere else. But it's just an initial allocation of funds. You know, with this, but it gives kind of a type, a framework of what we want to do. And plus, this is available over the next three years. With that, the supplemental pay for the sheriff, that's the, that's just the cost of those. Water system, we have some connections, some connections that we can have, cross-connections between the systems. What I want to do, and I have a little bit more detail in this in the regular report, work with the city's engineer on developing those programs where we can run additional, primarily connections between the systems that give us better redundancy. It won't allow us to pick up a few customers, but the goal is not an expansion for customers. But the goal is to make sure we have better efficiencies in the system.
That's the million dollars.
That's the amount. You're looking at basically $10 per inch of pipe, per foot of pipe, anytime you want to put it in the ground.
I'm surprised I don't see that money go.
So, like I said, in court, if you want to run.
Yeah, if somebody is in the street, they got to use. But still, a million dollars, no, no.
And then put generators at our three lift stations. It's not often that they are needed. But when we need it, you know, when you have delayed power outages, especially primarily after storms, when you might be out of power for a couple of days, you can have those effects in a, in the water system. Or when we had after the four hurricane, where we basically, the city and county combined, we basically lost the water system because we had so many breaches. That just increases the rate that we can resupply the water system over the time. And again, because the Recovery Act specifically can be used for infrastructure, these are items that we just need to do. Also, we've talked about business recovery grants for small businesses that are Scotland County owned and operated. We did something that were COVID response grants during the EDC last year for $50,000. But this would be a robbery. It's not specifically relating to COVID, but we know your business.
It is a small business you're talking about.
Small business.
Yeah.
Under twenty employees.
Okay.
So.
Kevin, you have to have employees.
Yeah.
What do you anticipate the requirements doing on that today?
Like what we did for the last year, but that was COVID response. You had to show that you did it. But those requirements were, you know, you had to be a Scotland County resident. You had to have a business that was operating at least a year before COVID. So you had to be in business before January 1 of 2019. And you needed to have less than fifteen, uh, less than twenty employees. We didn't want these funds, we, you know.
The funds didn't go to NCC, yeah.
You know, because.
Not the larger group.
Not the larger group. So they were, they're, so we're probably going back to looking at those that were twenty employees or less. And this would be easier for this whole practice. It may be that hairdresser that couldn't work for three months. Yeah, now, you're gonna, we're gonna wanna see your tax return for 2019 and your tax return for 2020. You know, if you made more money in 2020 than you did in 2019, we're not gonna give you a grant.
Who, 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 um, I know you said EDC will always see that. When those grant applications come in, when they come in, who, who goes?
Last time, it was Mark Ward, the city downtown planner, and the chamber director. Yeah, Chris English.
Plus, we can change that somewhat if you want.
That can be changed, and that was, part of that was, the goal was to have people who were business-oriented.
Right.
And also were not elected officials because if somebody didn't qualify.
They didn't get the job yet.
Yeah, it's easier for them to show Chris English than for them to choose.
How long is that, wouldn't it put this in the bag? How long is it before it's ready?
Till we run out of money?
I mean, when are we gonna start?
Once we did this, we could actually start this fairly.
That process is pretty quick.
That part, that part is pretty quick.
So, so people are gonna submit their application for the grant?
Yes.
Okay, so we do advertise and all that. Okay, that's all I'm gonna.
So, and I want to bring up the topic, I know you didn't get into the broadband, but I don't know if we can do much in that area, but, what Dr. McCollum is here talking about. Is there some way, because I know there's different thinking parts of that field, that, that we can tap some of this and we can put under here, fifty here, and get her close to what she wants to be at? I know this is restricted, Lenny, but it's also pretty fine-based. I don't know whether, I don't know if you'd call it grand or what you would call it, but I'm just throwing that out there as an idea. Because she said they were looking to start in October, and we gonna drag around here, it's gonna be set here for a month.
And she been calling us every week.
Yeah.
Not every week, of course.
I'm just throwing that out there as an idea because we still have $800,000 left with that additional. And I'm not saying take it from that and untax it. I would say maybe we could adjust these numbers to make it work out. Because we're also getting another three, three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, or, or maybe we commit to the 225 out of this this year and 225 next year. Because that's she said, twenty-four months for the whole kitchen. Just throwing it out there. I'm trying to make the number clear, so.
I agree. Do we have that possibility?
For a community, for a community center, it's gonna be harder to do. However, like he's talking about, we can fund a nutrition site, and they have a nutrition site.
They have a recreation site.
Right, they have. Yeah, cool. We can fund their mentor programs if they can free it. We can fund what's already funded if they can move that money up. So we can't build, we can't fund them to build a gym with this money. But if I give you $5, if you're already gonna spend, you can now move that $5 somewhere.
But they may or may not.
They, they may or may not.
I'm saying, they said I put the whole plug on $2 million, right?
Right.
That's what he's, he's saying. But, you know, we, we gotta give him some answers because she been calling.
Well, it's, it's fast approach of that where they gonna start.
So what can we do, Kevin, for this group? Can we spare, how much can we spare?
My, my suggestion, I just wrote some things down here. You know, maybe, maybe if you took $100,000 out of the water extension, maybe you, maybe if you only did one or two of the generators and took about a hundred there, you're at 200. Take the $100,000 off that COVID number and $50,000 off that broadband number, red for fifty.
Well, we may not, we don't have to go fifty at one time.
No, well, but we can split it up into two years.
Because I don't, we don't want nothing taken out of the broadband.
Well, we're just gonna be broadband. So if we're gonna find out, we're not gonna run mines, we're not gonna be broadband.
Yeah, we just gonna support it.
Yeah, we're just gonna be supporting whatever's done, but, and, and we don't have to. We can do half this year, half next year.
But he's saying, you don't know how you can qualify this for this particular money.
But I'm sure he figured that.
He can figure it out. Well, I hope you get good night's sleep, Kevin, but you're gonna learn to figure out tomorrow.
Well, you'd have to talk with him before you do that. I mean, I'm just trying to, normally, I wouldn't put that kind of urgency on him.
She's under, under the watch here.
Yeah, she been asking this way here about how much.
But some of that does come back to, you know, what do you want the answer to be? You know? If y'all are interested in supporting it.
And the other thing that occurs to me is, if we can do that with these funds for a nutrition site, for a homework center, why would we not apply those funds to what's gonna be going on in Johnson?
And that comes back into exactly coming.
And once we know we.
Exactly what we're looking to do.
Of course, it's. I'm sorry, that means we're gonna, I know it's not over, but.
Although.
I was thinking, that's used for that.
Who's saying that?
Spirituality.
Yeah, 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 I don't.
And, and so, but now, he's not a fine expert.
But you, you hear what I'm saying?
I'm not, I'm not. Well, I guess what it gives, it kind of leads to the question, and I want to put out the item for us doing both if we can. But I think it is a decision from us, is our mindset to use the policy of support partners in ministry and not do IJ, or are we gonna try to do both?
My, my sense would be. Go ahead.
My sense would be. Now, first of all, it would be, if the county's going to be involved and lead in the IJ project, that's where I think we should focus our funds. I'm just doing.
And so we're not sure if you use that for that.
It's all about whether for the community, for Johnson or for partners in ministry, it'll be different. Yeah.
We gotta figure it all out from here.
Yeah, but how, what works do we put on what part?
So in that instance, Mr. Gibson, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I agree. But I also think even if we can't do the 450, I would love for us to try to do something at a large, on a large scale to support partners in ministry.
And I, I'm not, I'm not. I think we all agree. But other than trying to do 450 over two years, I'd rather do 125 each year, or 250, and, and focus as much of this money as we can.
And you still got, even if you take the 125 out of that, you still got $800,000.
That you not, did not allocate this year.
Plus, you're still getting another 3.3 next year, so.
And is there a third year?
No. It's, it's two years of funding, three years to spend, or three years to uncover it, four years to spend it.
Not to jump off of this, but I want to ask Ms. Goldston. One of the things you say consistently about this ARP money is your desire to see this money back into the hands of citizens somehow. What do you envision with that?
Because I was just saying it's a small business.
No, you were talking about helping the community somehow.
No, I was talking about a small business.
I think what, excuse me about that. BJ's been saying, all along, you've been saying this money needs to go back into the hands of the citizens.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Do you see that happening here in the way you want it to?
No, not the way it's outlined here. It's like, you know, I'm just saying about a million dollars for the water system. You see the thing? It's not the way I see, the way I would like it to be, no.
But Kevin, are you seeing in any other areas, any creative things that they're doing, where, where citizens have been impacted even better? And along those lines, I want to ask you, is there any way that we can help church community services with some of these programs?
Some of that would go into the community agency grants. Because like last year, we gave $75,000 to United Way, and then they allocated for church community services was a large beneficiary of that. Along with the Sunday school bags. And as much, partners in ministry was also a beneficiary of that.
For them, yeah.
Yeah, so, and those are also already partners with United Way. So it would be easy for us to allocate those funds there, and then they can help facilitate that.
But you can specify if United Way can. But you can specify if United Way can do it.
We can guidance, or we can go off and just do specific allocations administratively on my side. It's a whole lot easier to work with United Way with, yeah.
Yeah, but, but right now, we have an urgency. I just moved this last year, so I would like us to rent city tonight, and I do support IIJ, and we won't find so much of that without her urgency. When she say, when she go open house, oh, yeah, open house. So, can we find, say, something about it in any way?
Go up to the pen, three hundred fifty. You said what? You live off of some of these, from here, that TMC gets three fifty.
Yeah, and, and it just comes back into, I'd work with them and find out ways of defining.
I was going to do the brief, yeah.
And you can still do it.
Yeah, this isn't a problem, I think, sure.
Um, and, but I mean, I guess my question to that is, is if we do that, and we do this, do we do it tonight? Or do we need to wait until you find out for, for her if they can do that, or do we just go ahead and stand it and, and, and if she can't do it, then it's great, if it's not, then we'll have to take a different route.
Mrs. Gibson, I understand what you're saying. I wish, Mr. Gibson, I did say that I feel like this money should be for people. And, uh, some of this money should definitely go to the homes or in the hands of the people. And that to me was intent originally.
Secretary of the House of Urban Development, I don't even know who she is, um, gave a speech at their NACO conference. And the one thing she used in words about this money was, there you go, you really get rid of, you have to.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I like, I like making those, maybe go ahead, if you're Kevin the nod, then three fifty.
It could be for you.
Yeah. We got a motion?
I'll second that. I mean, we're, just to define that, we're taking it out of this, and, but we're doing it over two years.
Yeah, okay, I'll say. So this, well, um.
Is that clear?
No, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear the motion.
Hundred, hundred seventy-five at each year.
Each year.
Yeah, okay, I.
Because we getting money.
That was your second. Right, all right. We got a motion in second.
Jason needs to be clear on that because he did.
It's a hundred and seventy-five to partners.
A year for the.
What the motion is, if I may, is that we're asking Kevin to, to see if that is possible, and if it is, to go ahead and make it happen. At a rate of a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year this year and out, the same allocation of that year.
All right.
As, as showing on this case.
I've got it.
Now, if you can't make it happen, then you have to come back to it.
Well, we, we definitely have it happens, then, then, then theoretically, those figures still stay, stay part of these other numbers. Uh, question, yeah.
So is that motion, I want to make sure I'm understanding, except that it's two point five.
I think we've got to come back to that.
Okay.
So we got that, we got a motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any votes say nay? I say aye. Now, I think what we need is a motion to approve this allocation.
Would that be two point, two point one three, right?
And with this, the only thing that's going to have any specific action in the next thirty days from the county side are what goes to community agency grants and what goes into business recovery grants. Yeah, and, and the sheriff's already done, so that.
So, so, uh, so we don't, we're just having to vote on this tonight?
Uh.
I think what he's saying is, is we can do it tonight, and then if we change it, we can.
That's, I don't want to do your job, just go in and watch this.
No, uh, none of, the only thing that we're going to write a check for in the next thirty days out of these funds, other than sheriff's payroll, uh, we would do the hundred thousand dollars to United Way for them to allocate out. And we would, the EDC meets tomorrow, they may not get the check tomorrow, but, uh, you know.
How much you want to get in?
But that, and because they would use the business, that, that would be a small.
That goes directly to the P.
Oh, you, you say, I thought you say, uh, I thought you said the COVID group. You, you say, okay.
The EDC.
Okay, that's what I missed at the same.
Not the CDC, the EDC.
I'm tired, that's what.
We, I think, if we have a good motion, no, sir. Um, and, and what I, I, I'm not making a motion, but what I'm, I'm wanting to find out is what I'm hearing is are we saying that we just want to do those two, although it was a motion for the whole thing?
No, well, I mean, that, I, I think what Kevin's saying is we can do the motion for the whole thing, we got what to change.
Okay, oh, I, I'm going to make that admitted, but let me just say this, I, I am still with this, Goldston, and I wish that there was some way, and I don't know what it looks like, and so I want to ask you to just look out there and see what some other communities are doing, ways that some of these funds are getting into the hands of the average citizen. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if there's something we can do, but just see if there are some creative things that they're doing. You know, along those lines, I offer the motion that we, uh, accept this recommendation, however, adding in that three fifty.
Take it out.
Take it out, three fifty four, uh, and make whatever justice you need to, to do that for partners.
Your motion in second. Any further discussion? Here you go, and all in favor of the motion is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or o, say nay, yeah, I say aye. Should have said some point ten, but, so that figure then becomes two point four. It's, it's, it's a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars or less.
Yes, okay.
And, and my motion's thing, yeah.
It's at nine o'clock, I don't add it.
Okay.
What time is it for chemistry? What time is it? Nine fifteen.
Let's, um, we all, let's try to wrap that up here.
Uh, the last thing, the last thing, and please don't get me to go into it in detail, we need an approval for the schools to move the lease payment to us from operating the capital dollars, and that is because Gatsby changed the rules last year, they became effective. So they can't pay us out of this pocket, so they need to move the money from this pocket to this pocket to pay.
Uh, so.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye, aye, say nay, I say aye.
I don't know what you're saying.
Any commissioners, comments, anybody have anything they feel pressed to say? I hope, just call, you're still with us? Okay, um, so, uh, soon we are, we are adjourned.
So.
We have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.